Richard and Jack are here. They're going to have roast.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can see it.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. Man, what are we doing to deserve that? Oh, now, little bit. Welcome. Call the meeting in order. This is our regular council meeting work session, September the 4th, 2014. If you would, please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of American liberty and to the republic which stands on your nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May the vow. Father, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here. We've had a good attendance and we really appreciate all the people coming out, especially with a little rain, which is much needed as well. And we ask that you be with us tonight, help us make the right decisions for all our citizens, all these things we pray in your name. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor who signify by saying aye. Of no, all members voting for the motion. You have in your agenda package a financials for July for informational purposes only. Are there any questions or comments regarding that? If so, we have our CFO here could answer those questions. Okay, moving along. You have also in your package the minutes from August the 7th, public hearing, August the 15th, council retreat minutes, August the 19th, special call council meeting, and August 21st, the council, August 21st, regular council meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those minutes? Not on entertaining a motion to approve all those minutes. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor who signify by saying aye. Of no, all members voting for the motion. All right, 10 minute public input. We have one name, Mr. McLaughlin.
Appreciate hearing me again on this. This is in regard to the matter of the little .15 acre property where the water tank used to be. And just wanted to make a couple of points. I had met with Mr. Otavio since our last meeting and talked about the need and use and discussed the point that the, back in the 1960s, I think this property was acquired. It was acquired for a specific reason because the city can't, the water service up there need pressure. Well, so it was acquired for a specific reason, and that's why it's only .15 acres. It's not anymore because they bought just what they needed at the time to service that need. Well, that need no longer exists. That need was taken over by the county, and they built a new million gallon tank, and everything was turned over to the county, which they service. The city saw fit to even go ahead and tear the tank down. The lines have been removed, it's not connected to the system anymore at all. I know some members of the council might be resent if I've given up any property, and I think certainly it's due, you know, as a council member it'd be wise to weigh and see the possibilities before you give up anything, and I think that's a good cause. I think it's a good process to go through. I think that in this case, it's just such a small piece and has such a specific use that the chances of this having a need that could be filled by the city in any of our lifetimes is between slim and none. So because the need's not there anymore, I don't see the point of the city hanging on to it for some, you know, future speculative purpose. Besides the fact we're willing to pay money to get it back.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving along, under the whole business discussion of the Edwah Park operation management, Mr. Hutton.
Yes, thank you. This is part of the, one of four of our goals that we set in our retreat is to continue to work on parks and recreation. So with this park coming on screen in the months of October, I have started the search to find out ways to best manage the scheduling of teams, running the ample theater, as well as the concession stand. So I've had preliminary meetings with the Y as possibility of running and scheduling. And then yesterday I met with the county, and Mr. Cooper showed her desire to enter that as well. So he's going to meet with Brian, their parks director, and get back with me so that we'll be able to start looking at different ways to approach this. And then tomorrow I have a meeting with Matthew Thomas and Megan Griffith about the ample theater and how best to operate that. Megan, Mr. Griffith has already done quite a bit of research on that because we're getting some inquiries on how to use it. It's that, that part of the park will be ready probably even into October. They took up some of the grass that didn't take in place, and that will probably go down, might have gone down today, if not tomorrow, probably. And then the only thing real big left, two items, is we've got to cut the grass down one more time in order to put the top dressing of sand on it. After that, we'll pave and stripe and we'll be ready to go. So by then, end of October, or middle of October, we'll be in control.
So are you saying that the, it'll be out of the hands of the contractor by the middle of October into our hand?
It will be. It will be. And as far as maintenance goes, what we're doing on the maintenance of the field and anything requiring maintenance is that we have gone to Georgia Development Partners and requested from them all the things that we need to maintain the turf. That's our biggest question mark because it is branded turf, as well as the trees and et cetera. And they're going to give it, give it to us for Jovi to have. But at the same time, rather than us take that over, we're asking, because there's a warranty period of a year on those items, we're going to ask that Georgia Development either do it themselves or sub it out, and we will contract for a period of six months, possibly a year, depending on how the quote comes back, and they will do the, they or their sub would do the maintenance on it, rather than us taking over during the warranty period. Because if there's some warranty items, we don't want to get, we're pointing fingers at each other.
Right, makes sense. Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Item B, discussion of sale of city property, .15 acres on Shore Drive. Mr. Cummins?
Mr. Mayor, council, city management's reviewed this request to release piece property, and I can only state that there is no current need or perceived future need for the property, but it is a council decision on what to do with that property.
Anyone have any thoughts, comments?
Mr. Chris, do we have, is there a tank on it right now? No.
It, I'm checking, go ahead.
I am hesitant to sell, for us to sell anything we own up there because we're going to be growing in every direction. I just wonder if maybe, you know, we might want to keep that because it's obviously going to cost us more to buy more property to put one on it. I mean, do they? I don't see, I wonder if we see the need really to act this way.
Well, I know, I know I saw some information that the city attorney had sent saying that, you know, we didn't even really have to bid it out if it were a parcel that was too small to be used independently and so forth. Well, obviously it can be used independently, I would think, because it had a water tank on it, it was used. It could also be used as big enough for a cell tower. Quite honestly, it might not be a bad location for a cell tower. Does anyone know what that elevation of that side is? David, do you know what the elevation is?
Not off the top of my head, no.
It's on a pretty high point there at the top, you know.
If you were going to put a tank there, you would want a high spot.
Or you, or a cell tower.
Yeah.
You know, we do have cell towers that's located on property that we lease, actually tanks, I guess they're located on the tanks, and independent sites as well. I kind of feel like a lot of hanging on to it, but that's council decision. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Cummins, as it is. Have you looked and thought about cell towers?
We've got cell towers. We're already working on this one out here, replacing some of them.
Right, they're painting that.
Anyone? Make that decision at the, what is it, 18th?
Well, in between, I have no objection of getting rid of it unless, if there's truly a possibility with a cell tower on, then it would, can we do some search there between now and then? If we, if there's no interest in it, I say, let's get rid of it. Other than that, I don't know what else would go on it unless you had a big sign that you could put up there. That's probably too far off the street.
Anyone else? Okay. Let us move to item C, discussion of retreat goals and next steps. Mr. Hutton, you've already discussed one of those aspects.
Well, I'm not going to discuss each one of them. These are, for those who are in the audience, we have four goals that we, the council and the mayor, we all agreed upon at our retreat a couple of weeks ago. And just for y'all's information, a master plan for the city was one, in no particular order, economic development, to continue our efforts in economic development. The third one was debt reduction, and the fourth one is improved management of parks and recreation. Those are the four goals that we all agreed on to be rather short-term goals. And what I'm, the reason I asked for this to be put on the agenda is that in Management 101, if you want to get something accomplished and you set a goal, you bring it up on a regular basis, and then if you inspect what's there, generally you get some action. So I would like to make a, suggest that Mr. Dyer make a resolution that this be placed on the agenda at every, it could be every month, every work session, or every voting, it could be every meeting, that we would go down. That doesn't mean that we could go down and just to say it was number four parks and recreation, and I happen to be running that particular one, I just say, I have nothing to report today. But after a few months, if I kept coming up saying I don't have anything to report, I guess the council would look at me and say, well, what the heck are you doing?
I think you just made that motion, and we will just ask that it be on our agenda each time.
Well, do we need to do that as a resolution, or is that just something?
I don't think, I don't think so. I mean, you know, you can put anything on it if you want to.
Well, I don't want to complicate things, I just wanted to make sure we do it.
It's just, Clark has instructions to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item, item 10 in the new business, discussion of juror parking. I've had a request, I guess, and also sort of complaint that historically speaking, parking on court day sometimes has been, you know, insufficient. And occasionally, not very often, but occasionally a juror will get a parking ticket. And what has happened in the past was that that individual would take that parking ticket to the clerk of superior court, and that clerk of court would accumulate those during that, I guess, that court session, and then send them over with a notice that says this person was certification, this person was on the jury. And the police department or court, municipal court would basically waive that fine. We were told recently, it was discussed recently, I think, that, I believe the clerk of court's pretty much been told they weren't going to do that anymore, and I would just like to suggest that we do continue that. I know in 2012, there were only requests for 19 tickets or $190 worth of fines. So it's not a big moneymaker anyway, as such. And I think these people are there doing their civic duty, you know, if they get a parking ticket, I think we'll be able to deal with that. Miss McGee?
Could a juror be issued a colored sheet of paper to display in their dash while they're serving their duty?
I think that's a probably good idea. I mean, we just need to suggest that to the, to Patty Baker, the clerk of superior court. I think that, the only thing that might do, however, it might encourage, I wonder if it would encourage a park out on the street if they had that, knowing they weren't going to get a ticket. I don't know. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, at the current time, the chief of police is in discussions with the district attorney to arrive at a solution on heavy court dates so that there may be not even tickets issued. But I do like the idea that you suggest of where they get a signed excuse should they have been subpoenaed, and that would prevent just anybody from
Right.
coming in and saying, well, I was in court without the substantiation of being there. But like I said, the chief of police is working with the district attorney right now to work out a method so that this doesn't become a problem on heavy court dates.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, and speaking with the clerk, it was my understanding that this is really only issued five or six, maybe seven days a year. And when that has happened, historically, it's only then until noon when this has been an issue, and when it was an issue, there was a letter sent with the ticket from the clerk saying they were a juror, you know, an excuse, to excuse that. But I think one other issue is also that the court apparently is becoming, you know, overcrowded, and I think that'll make a decision in 2016 where they're going to expand where they are now and expand parking in that situation. They're currently by far the largest employer in downtown Canton. I think we should do whatever we can to accommodate them and then work with them. So I'm happy to hear that there's a compromise in the works.
Thank you. Next item B, discussion of nomination of replacement of David Rizendez on the Canton building authority. I will make a nomination on that at the next meeting. It's my intention at this point to, and he has agreed to do so, Bob Riley, to fill that slot. He's a great guy. Next item, discussion of a possible increase in occupational taxable professional state licensed individuals from $200 to $300 per year. Mr. Ringo, go do that.
Mr. Ringo can, or I can
You can't.
Basically, look at 10C is where the finance department is requesting that we consider re-increasing the professional occupation tax from 200 to 300. The state code allows up to $400. The surrounding areas of Woodstock and Holly Springs charge 300. Marietta and Kennesaw are at the state limit of 400. We currently issue 335 occupational licenses, and it generates around $67,000 of tax revenue now, or license revenue, I should say. And the increase to 300 would generate an approximate additional 30,000 in occupational taxes.
I'd like to ask city manager, is this an exclusive list of those it would affect?
Yes, it's basically anybody who's licensed by the state, lawyers, doctors, real estate people got themselves exempted, but it is
Oh, real estate exempted?
Yeah, real estate agents, when they passed the law in the 90s, specifically exempted themselves from the law, so they're not included in that list.
Appraisers are not?
Appraisers are not, but it is the last, I just don't have them all.
Is this, this included like beauty shops and all that?
I don't think so. When they say licensed by the state, it's not everybody that gets a license by the state. It's professions that are licensed by the state.
Well, it says social workers. You know, social workers. I'm sure what that, what that is. Family therapists, marriage and family therapist.
Would be like a psychologist.
Unit directors, or something like this.
Like the other one in business. Everybody's dying to see them.
Okay, does anybody have any comments about that proposal?
I'm really not for it. I think we should encourage all the economic growth we can get, just charging more money. I just, you know, I just don't see it. This is just another tax, or, you know, why should we follow it just because everybody else does?
Anyone else?
Well, maybe if we did charge 300, it'd release some of this first floor space for retail.
Hopefully not, hopefully not at this point. All right, next item. Discussion of demand services agreement with Atkins North America, Inc. Mr. Cummins?
Yes, demand services is a method of where you set up more or less on a retainer, non-cost retainer business, or basis. A engineering firm or a firm that does studies, it would be similar to Stan Tech that we currently have, we actually have ESI on a current thing, demand services. The advantages of demand services is that it allows you to pass some of the work that you might do in-house in defining the scope of small tasks by sitting down and verbally discussing a project or a small project that you want done. And the engineering firm actually then develops the scope, you get into discussions, they come back with a price for that. On small projects, there's also a disadvantage if you don't have this, that if you use the RFP process, you will exclude many of the larger firms that don't want to waste their time developing a complete proposal. That's one. Two, the timeframe in order to get approval going through the RFP process, the Two, the timeframe in order to get approval going through the RFP process, the advertising and everything, it takes extensively more time. We do this, a good example of one that we've done with another firm could be, the straight study was done with Stan Tech, that was, that's a good example. The approval levels are still controlled to major degree by council. We are limited to a twenty thousand dollar project before it has to come to council. Anything in excess of twenty thousand dollars has to be brought to council for an approval level. These are two different firms that have a wide breadth. Mr. Atavian has a folder on each one of these and an actual professionally prepared folder by the firms of all the services they offer. And we're just asking to be able to use a wider breadth than just the single Stan Tech and ESI at the current time.
Anyone have any comment?
Just a question, these are two contracts here. Are they, did we write those or are those a standard contract?
Oh, they're standard, I believe, are they not?
We didn't, unentwrapped it, but it is one that we've used several times in the past.
Oh, we feel confident, we didn't read?
Yeah, it's a
It doesn't, I'll begin to do anything other than get a quote from them.
Stan?
Say we utilize these for small projects, is a small project defined as something under twenty thousand dollars?
It could be, I would think, I don't know where you cut the line, but if it's over twenty thousand dollars before, we would be authorized to do that project, we'd have to bring it to council for approval.
Which is
Twenty thousand.
Current.
Yeah, which is a current method, that's correct. We even do this, you know, I'll give you a good example of, we do this in emergency cases and we don't even have, in this case, a, thank goodness the contractor is working with us without a standard contract, is like we had a sewer line breach, it's, we're addressing on an emergency basis right now. We've got to run about a hundred and fifty feet of sewer line and we just got to go ahead and do it. We don't have a choice, we've got an EPD issue, and that's going to be eighty thousand dollars and that doesn't even, that doesn't even come to council because we can't wait a month while sewage is coming out of the ground or potential losses. But this type of thing would be tasks that are non-emergency that are, that we're going to do. One of them might be your way sign findage, or your findage for your way signs.
Does UP do that repair or is that something we go?
That particular repair is contracted outside, it's not a UP, this particular one, beyond the scope of their particular services.
So the two, I guess we're looking at the same thing with Atkins and then Brown and Caldwell, places the same thing. Do we, how were those two picked based on our experience with them or did we send out RFP for two different firms?
Oh, RFP, both of those companies have done business with the city satisfactorily. And I think, I believe, and Joe will be correct when wrong, isn't Atkins involved on Marietta? They're doing something
No, sir, that would be Archius.
Archius, I'm sorry. My A is mixed up. The selection is based on past experience, knowledge of their scope of services. Mr. Atavian has a complete folder, he can answer specific questions if you have on either one of those two companies. They're large companies, they cover a wide breadth of services. And again, the retention of them does not commit us to doing any particular job with them. Each one, any typical, any project has to be submitted to one of them. It just gives them the feeling that when they do discuss with us, they have a likelihood of getting a business. It also allows us to do something which we can't do with RFPs, is it allows us to negotiate, they come back with the scope of services that have been laid out and a price for doing it. And we look at it and we say, that's too high a price, we don't want to do this. It gives us the ability to negotiate the prices, change the scope of the work. It's just a total flexibility that you can obtain. But we're, again, restricted, we can't, as city management, we can't approve anything that's above that twenty thousand dollar limit, has to come right up here to this table.
Mr. Barrett?
May I address Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins, when there's a project and it's going to be twenty thousand dollars or less, do you choose on your own with the engineers who's going to do that project without consulting council? So you would be spending that twenty thousand dollars just fine and you may or may not choose one of these two companies?
Well, if I may, I'd answer the question is, first of all, I don't choose if the engineer would come with a recommendation. There's several things that are important criteria. First of all, any monies expended for that project have to be in the budget somewhere. If they're non-budgeted, they would have to come to you anyway, whether it's seven thousand or eighteen thousand or whatever amount. So if it's not a budgeted project or budgeted in the, within the, within what you approve, then it comes here. If it is in the budget and is underneath the twenty thousand, based on the engineer's recommendations of whether to proceed, mine would be an approval process, not a selection process. Because I'm not qualified, very honestly, to select a specific engineer. I leave that up to the engineering department.
Thank you.
We have three professional engineers in-house, which is a large number compared to most cities our size. We also apparently have two consulting firms on an on-demand services agreement. And we're asking for two more. I don't, I don't really know why we don't just, would anybody that, I mean, there's, there are dozens and dozens of firms in the Atlanta metro area that would qualify and do this kind of, to do this kind of work. Would we be open to accepting any of those? And if so, I guess, or if not, why not? I'm not sure that the expeditious part of this is really valid. And then all you got to do is pick up the phone and call somebody, tell them what you want and they can do it without, you know, whether they've got a contract or not, a demand services contract. What I see happens is, let me ask this question to our city attorney, does, once this contract is signed, it's just a general contract, not knowing specifically what projects it may include, it would no longer require another signature of the mayor to sign contracts in accordance with charter. Is that being correct? Because I'd already assigned one contract for it.
Well, I understand that this is, they would then provide the services of perhaps drawing up plans or some kind of list. That work can be done without another contract because you'd have this contract. But any work that would have to be done, it might have, anything that's going to require a written contract would have to come back to the council. City manager can't sign the contract. So my understanding would be that you would just be calling on this, these companies to do some level of work that they would then do under this contract.
Right.
So the answer would be yes to your question, unless the engineering company required another written contract.
Were you talking about, that would be a contract with a contractor, not with the engineer?
Right, the engineers could do work without another
So they can either sign on anything without an additional contract?
Up to twenty thousand dollars, right?
Right.
Scope of services, right? If they, if they wanted another written approval, I think it'd have to come back to council. And I think in most cases, they do want a written approval of anything of any size.
So essentially what this does, it sort of cuts a layer out of a loop on the small projects?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the council, I mean, it cuts the council out on the small project.
Okay. Under the, let me see here, this, this is a three-year agreement, okay? Also, I find that item, here we go. Under the compensation page on thirteen of the second, well, Atkins contract, yes, no, it's the, well, it doesn't really matter, but it's a compensation. The, the task orders shall be based on the scope of services required for the individual task order. Okay, so I am assuming that, I believe, Mr. Cummins, I believe you said that the scope of services would be devised, I guess, by the firm itself?
I would say that it would be written up based on conversations with engineering rather than engineering defining and writing up the entire scope of work. It's done in a conversational mode and then they come back and say, this is the way we understand the scope of the services you're requesting and this is the cost that we have for that scope of services. And then you get into, well, I think the scope here is different, we get into negotiations that is that a fair price for the amount of the service and so forth?
Okay, so the scope of services would be developed by them in conjunction with the staff and the scope of services then would soon be approved by the staff as well as the fee which would be negotiated based on those, on that scope of service?
Correct.
So I guess to me, I would, I would like to see in this, if we did this, I'd like to see at least a chart of their hourly rates of the various levels of expertise within the company. Also, it says services and equipment, say, wait, it says expenses include but are not limited to, these are reimbursable expenses, services and equipment used applicable to pro, to the projects such as special accounting, computer and electronic data processing, fail testing and laboratory analysis. Does that mean we buy them a computer? Then there's a number of other things, of course, living and travel expenses of employees when away from home. I'm assuming if it was a small project, sure, it would be too much of that. And of course mileage, which I understand, some of that's pretty standard, I thought, I just thought the use of equipment might be a little, a little much to include in their expenses, but anyway. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess we could look at all the individual details, but none of this commits us to any specific expense. And if that expense were to be included in the scope of the services, we would question whether or not that should be included. And I stand to be corrected of, but I believe this is a standard agreement that's been used by the city for a long time, even including, I guess, standard agreements that you've signed in the past as to
Thanks, go ahead.
It may be, but it may not, it may have changed since the past, but I'd have to look at it, line on, line or word, or word. As to hourly rates, again, we could say that a particular engineering firm charges ninety dollars an hour and another one charges a hundred dollars, but it's really an immaterial number because when you define the project, the one engineering firm that's charging ninety dollars may not be the best deal because they may think it's going to take them a hundred hours to do it and charge you nine thousand dollars. And the other engineering firm that's charging you a hundred dollars is going to get it done in fifty hours and charge you five thousand. So the amount of the hourly rate at this particular point is really immaterial, it's the scope of the project and how much that project is going to cost you when you're going to go about doing it. I mean, I guess we could attach to each one of these their standard rates, but it wouldn't make any difference relative to the, to the scope of the project because they may have an engineer that can do it in half the time at, you know, at slightly higher rate than another firm. So we didn't include that, we could, we could change this contract, we could make those adjustments, you know, if the council chooses, it's, it's just an attempt to obtain greater flexibility and delay in time.
I would, I would, I would assume that these two were on the list because either one of them could do the job and not one would be doing a that much better job than another, than the other firm. But, you know, I understand what you're saying there, but if you knew what their hourly rates were and either one of them could do the job equally, I would, I would think I would want to go with the lower one, just to save money, but that's just me. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Grant?
Would we be paying these companies a retainer?
No.
Yeah. And then if we wouldn't be paying them a retainer and we are under no obligation to use their services, they're still going to have to figure out a price for us. Why would this company be interested in this type of agreement?
Well, I know from personal experience that every time when I had my own business, when I got quote, asked for a quote, they were shopping forty-eight different companies. I had no interest in wasting extensive hours to generate a quotation to provide to that customer because the likelihood of me getting the business may, is significantly diminished. So when you have agreements with these firms and they know that you're going to come to them for quotes and there's nothing to prevent us from going to two different firms to compare the same task order, they have a tendency to say, I've got a much higher chance, or if I'm competitive, to get that kind of business. So that gives them a sort of an upfront, I don't like to say the word edge, but it makes them feel better. A large company that has an extensive range of services is, doesn't jump up and down and get excited about an eighteen thousand dollar engineering study to the same extent of this is a small company that's very specialized, they jump up and down because they now just found maybe ten percent of their monthly revenue in one job, the others don't. And there's just a likelihood that they'll deal and work with you better if they have this kind of arrangement.
Do you think you could, are more likely to get a better price when you're dealing with a company who knows they're not competing with anyone else?
I think if you, we know what general costs are and we get into negotiations, I think you have a benefit of actually negotiating maybe a better price.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Grant?
One, one question I noticed on the Atkins contract versus the Brown and Caldwell under identification where they had kind of stricken the word claims out of identification and Caldwell's contract did not do that, I was just curious about that.
Is there another explanation for that now?
It's just different, the two
Yeah, I saw that too in here. I prefer that to the lawyer.
Oh, okay, right here. Each for the Atkins contract, so they
So his contract should be the, basically the same contract except for names and name and
Yeah, that's why it caught my attention that they were different here.
Yeah, one's red lined and one's not.
Essentially what that was, that was their legal review of our contract and suggestions for us to consider incorporating into the contract. That's no means a standard for actual contract, that was their suggestions. Whether we choose to accept that or not, that's, that's our choice.
So the red is what they were striking?
That, the, the one on the Atkins was their legal comments.
The other company didn't
The other company didn't have any?
Uh, no.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
It appears that they wouldn't wanna be held responsible for claims.
Yeah.
I would, I wouldn't agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of thoughts.
Anyone else? Council, thank you. Next item. Discussion of the Planning Commission's Recommendational Case, CUP fourteen oh six, Day Two, was here a one, Murphy Oil Company Conditional Use Permit? Mr. Cummings, Mr. Patton?
Mr. Patton, if you would please come forward and announce one for me, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members of the planning commission did conduct a public hearing on conditional use permit approval for Murphy Oil Company, uh, the site is, uh, out at Walmart. Planning Commission did recommend approval of a conditional use permit for Murphy Oil for the convenience store gas pumps, uh, would take up a part of, uh, the Walmart parking lot. They, uh, did recommend two conditions, one, that an ingress egress easement be shown for the portion of the property that they would be obtained from Walmart Corporation, or Walmart Realty, I guess, uh, in the northeast corner, uh, which provides, uh, common access to the other shopping center and, uh, that back, uh, route towards, uh, the motel and the other road. Second, uh, proposed condition was, uh, provide Georgia Department of Community Affairs approval for the modular building that would be brought in in, uh, sections and, uh, put together on site.
Modular buildings. That could mean a, a number of things, and, uh, I don't know if we wanna run down that area anymore than what it is.
This is an industrialized building that will have brick in the EFS, uh, on the exterior other than glass. Uh, the, the building has already been through the Kent Oversight Committee for their review and approval.
What about signage? Are they gonna come to us and answer the big signs?
Uh, have to wait and see. Uh, they are aware of what, uh, the sign regulations are until, uh...
I wouldn't wanna wait and have them build, and then they come, wouldn't it gonna be smart to have that done before?
Well, we don't know until, uh, they can't do anything until City Council addresses whether they're gonna run conditional use approval.
They could tell us what they're, what they're, wanna do with their signs.
Uh, they have a legal right to, uh, go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they, uh, wish to ask for permission for larger signs, uh, but, uh, that is a matter that would, uh, be addressed with Board of Zoning Appeals.
With that, the fact that it's in Walmart's parking lot, does that take away from us jurisdiction or something like that, the fact that it's in Walmart?
No, sir, Murphy Oil is actually purchasing property from Walmart Realty for the placement of this, uh, convenience, uh, store with, uh, fuel pumps, fuel stations.
What's gonna be the brand? Is it gonna be Murphy, Murphy? Did I understand, you, when I saw some of the illustrations of that, uh, there were some very, very large gas price signs. Did I understand you say that that was exempt from a sign, our sign ordinance?
Not, uh, our current, uh, sign ordinance that City Council adopted this past, uh, cannot.
Okay, okay. They're gonna want signs for their pricing?
Yes, sir, they can have, uh...
Where they gonna put it?
Uh, they would be allowed a monument sign, they can have wall signs, uh, they will have to, uh, submit part of, uh...
Can they go, can they go out on, they, they don't have frontage on Highway Five there, can they go out on Five and put, put a sign up there?
Unless, uh, property owner out there gives them permission to place a sign, uh, and there's not a sign there, then no, sir.
Can they go up twenty-two feet?
No, sir.
Okay. How high can they go?
Ten feet.
Okay.
Monument stop, and that's all that, uh, has been, uh, proposed, uh, as far as signage.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Anyone wanna stay on the next item, please?
Okay, and next, next item is a discussion, annual update of the capital improvements element and five-year short-term, uh, work plan for the impact fee program?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, I'm, uh, providing, uh, this preliminarily for, uh, the mayor and council members to look at. Uh, we will come back, uh, and, uh, request that a public hearing be held in October to address, uh, this annual update of the capital improvements element and five-year short-term work plan, uh, hopefully a resolution to submit for, transmittal for review and approval by Georgia DCA, as well as Atlanta Regional Commission. Uh, this is something that is required because of state law and impact fees. Normally, this comes to council in October. I would point out two things, that the package that you have before you now does not have the one sheet that is the year-end financial summary for the impact fees. Since our budget year ends September thirtieth, I could not include that, but that will be, uh, something that will be included, uh, in October. Then also, uh, on the road impact fee sheet you have in your package, I failed to keep Waleska Street in the road improvements. I forgot that, uh, there's some bridge repairs that have not been done in part of, uh, that project that are eligible for impact fees, so what you would see, uh, in October would include Waleska Street. And the other additional item from, uh, last year's annual update is, uh, some additional tactical weapons the police department requested.
I'm, I'm assuming, uh, when I first read this, it says, "Staff Proposals Conduct a Public Hearing at the City, City Council Work Session Meeting on October the second, two thousand and fourteen, and Final Action on the Resolution of Transmittal for the Required Review and Approval by Georgia DCA and Atlanta Regional Commission." When I first read that, it sounds like you were saying that we would, uh, hold a public hearing and then also vote on it at that now?
No, sir, not at the second, we'll come back two weeks later in regards to the resolution, uh, for transmittal.
Okay, okay. Yes? I might be jumping ahead on some of your discussion, I'm sitting here looking at the various projects. Are we there? Is that where we are on the discussion?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes. Okay. Under Parks, funny, I would look at that, isn't it? Edwah Park doesn't show. I got Edwar, Edwah Green, Greenway.
That is, uh, the, the actual park is part of, uh, the overall Edwah Greenway Master Plan, and I believe, uh, that, that park is contained within, uh, Phase Two, if I'm not mistaken, or all Greenway.
Should we not show, uh, something of that size, that we're making progress or doing something? It's being paid for with the county bond.
Yeah, it is.
This is for impact fees.
It, it is eligible for impact fees to be used to pay for it. I believe Councilman Huffman, if it's City Council's desire to not say, uh, Edwah Greenway Phase Two, Edwah Greenway Phase Three, and break it out by Edwah Park, uh, connector park between, uh, Heritage and, uh, Edwah River, I can certainly do that and bring that back to council in, in October.
I think we oughta show some progress being made.
It doesn't fit impact fees on it, right?
No.
So you're not gonna show any progress? That's, that's how this is calculated?
You said that, that it should, we should show something like this. Well, you gotta, you gotta pay for something with it.
It's up to City Council if you wish to go into that type of detail. All this is, is an annual report, uh, to Georgia Department of Community Affairs and Atlanta Regional Commission, that says that these are projects that the city of, uh, Canton has, that are capital improvements projects, and they are eligible for impact fee funds to be utilized to pay for the completion of these projects.
Well, I don't wanna bring up a source of, didn't we pay for part of that park that has stormwater?
That's still, I did.
Still that account?
No.
Uh, we, yeah, we, we paid for, we did pay for the, uh, part of the sewer. Wasn't that right? Stormwater part of the, of the grading, I guess it was, construction?
Construction of the stormwater.
Yeah.
I believe that, uh, there was some stormwater funds that were used for part of, uh, payment in the park.
I'd like to add, one more.
There are more.
One more, only one. And, and I know I might be out of sync here, but it's, uh, something that I'm sure Mr. McCrue would be interested in. I know it's a state highway, but our intersection down there at five, in one forty, going north up towards Waleska, I mean, I, I moved over to road improvements. Do we need to do something there?
Uh, there is a line item in there for some intersection improvements, uh, you see, uh, Riverstone Business Highway Five, uh, and some, uh, intersection improvements, uh, there are, uh, some funds available from impact fee monies that could be used for that, as well as Georgia Department of Transportation also has what's called some quick response funding, uh, if, uh, there's additional work needs done at an intersection, so there's an additional right turn lane, or that sort of thing.
We get, when you go in, when you first turn on one forty going up, and you go right past Walgreens, and there's a, turns to the left, Shoal Creek Road, Shoal Creek Road, thank you. We get stacking there with those school buses coming out of that school, stacking all the way back in there, and they are stacked up in that lane, and if the least we could do is put a left turn, so those people turning left on Shoal Road, that, that's a critical issue. I hate to go back through history here, but let me tell you. Fifteen or twenty years ago, or even longer, uh, the DOT had a, a plan to realign Hospital Road intersection with one forty, and that would've taken care of part of that problem there. On both ends, and for some reason, it never got done. And also, at about the same time, there was the plan, and this was even back in the, at least late eight, early nineties, maybe, there was a plan to multi-lane, four-lane State Route one forty from North Canton there, all the way to Lower Burris Road. That didn't get done.
That's still in the, uh...
It's still in the ten?
Regional Transportation Plan, I don't know if it's in, uh, the immediate five-year tip, but I believe that that's still within the, the RTP, uh, Mayor.
I don't know if I'll ever be able, if I'll be allowed to see that ever take place, but the one down there at the intersection, it's a, it, you see as many as ten to fifteen buses that are going north right there. It's a dangerous situation, and they stack, because one person making a left-hand turn, and the number of people coming south now are backed up trying to get through the traffic block, and it's, it just stops. Go ahead, please.
Will this include sidewalks? And I think if the Egyptians could finish the pyramids, we could finish a road.
What I think we need to do is, we need to, uh, we need to ask our city manager to contact the DOT with a request for evaluation of that intersection again, and see where we can go from there. Biggest responsibility, quite honestly, that is state. I mean, it's two-state highways, so, the intersection, two-state highways. But didn't we take over some, some of Five as a city? No, actually, well, yeah, but that, but that's in the county, and a little bit of it's in the city, I guess, but from, from, uh, Hernan Lane, I guess it is, all the way up to the, uh, car dealerships, that's State Route Business, Business Five, so it's, it's still State Route. So, anything else beyond that, they gave back to...
Closer to five seventy-five, I think, is in the city. The stuff...
On the other side of the intersection, or this side?
The west side of Exit Sixty?
Okay.
Up to the, um, McDonald's, up to McDonald's, I think, from the intersection of McDonald's. I think came out of the state system.
There are portions...
From the interstate, from five seventy-five up to McDonald's was actually taken out of the state system and, and turned over to the city.
What, what do you mean, five seventy-five, where?
Exit Sixty.
I don't think so. I don't think that's correct.
No, it, it, they're part of Marietta Highway, from near five seventy-five, where the Publix is and the Kroger is, is in the city. Fourteen, no, I had the wrong number, fourteen. Sixty is the next thing, yeah, fourteen, sorry.
So you think the old K Monarya is, is city or...
No, 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 just, just all that, what's not so new anymore, but that new, the, the public...
New section.
The public shopping center and the...
Portion of, uh, Riverstone towards five seventy-five, uh, I believe, is a city in, uh, the State Route designation, uh, makes a turn at the traffic signal, uh, there where Longhorns and all this, by the, by the, and, uh, cuts around that way, it's just like, uh, the intersection, Mr. Mayor, uh, the northwest portion of where Old Shoal Creek comes in, Waleska Road, I think that that is back to city now, not part of, uh, the State Route, uh, system, if I'm not mistaken.
But they, but they actually do from the state for some stretch in there on Exit Fourteen, that's all I...
But, uh, if I could, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huffman, a part of the purpose of providing this to you all now, is so that, uh, if you think of other projects, uh, contact our office, so we can, uh, discuss them in regards to whether they're eligible for impact fee monies, because it does have to be a system improvement, but I believe that, uh, some of the intersections, the one you talked about, is already covered in what we've got showing within that road CIE.
Well, I still, I still think that we, we need to get our city manager to contact DOT, and I'd be happy to go down and meet with them as well, and, uh, and, and request some assistance there at least on that intersection at one forty and Riverstone, because that's gonna be an expensive, expensive job, very expensive.
But it's not getting better.
But if we, if we've got some match to go along with it, you know, we're more likely to, to get something done. Jack?
The other one that's, we've talked about, and we've had its plans for a long time, is over off of Twenty, the Oatdale, uh, intersection there. We actually had an engineer draw that out, but we've never been able to do anything with it. Is that part of what might be able to be done, Ken?
Uh, we'd have to check with the Georgia Department of Transportation, 'cause State Route Twenty, I, I know is, uh, within the regional transportation, uh, plan, if not the immediate five-year transportation improvements, uh, plan for, uh, some engineering, uh, there's a whole, uh, state and federal project for State Route Twenty from Carterville all the way inside city limits of Canton that is in the regional transportation plan, that might address, uh, Oatdale, as well as how Marietta Highway comes in the highway plan.
Anyone else? Bill?
Yeah. So let me just ask, like, a general question, so this, um, work plan, it's just a report of identifying projects where impact fees could be spent? It doesn't obligate us to anything, if it, if, I'm trying to understand the ramifications of this update.
You cannot, it's a requirement of state law, we have to submit an update every year to Georgia Department of Community Affairs and Atlanta Regional Commission, uh, to stay in compliance with state law for, uh, City Canton's impact fee program. You have to have a capital improvements element, uh, which is a part of the comprehensive plan that specifies of system improvements and projects that City Council, uh, deem as, uh, necessary and want, uh, that they wanna conduct before you can expend impact fee money. The impact fee monies can only be spent to the projects that are within this, uh, five-year capital improvements element.
Okay. Restful Drive, need to come off of there?
Uh, I can't answer that question, there was a question, uh, and I believe that, uh, the attorney might have to answer that, 'cause there was, uh, uh, one time an encumbrance, uh, with potential, uh, development agreements. That's the reason it still shows.
It's, it's still showing because of some potential liabilities, which they...
Yes, sir, there is, uh, potential encumbrance with Restful... Yes, sir. There is a potential encumbrance with Restful.
This seems like, still seems like, uh, quite a bit, quite a bit of stuff here, to be honest with you. And I don't know how familiar, uh, the council is, I can say that it's, uh, I got an idea about these, but, how, how does this relate to what the last capital elements we had?
Last year, uh, as I mentioned, Mr. Mayor, uh, one addition was, uh, the police department requested for additional tactical weapons. And then on, uh, the road improvements, uh, I believe Railroad Street was taken off because that has been finalized through, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation when it, because it had not been finalized last year. I believe that the business buys some improvements with the signalization. That was on last year's, it's been deleted because that's been finalized out. And like I said, Waleska Street, I took it off and had forgotten about the bridge work that needs to be done and that bridge is a part of Waleska Street and it's eligible for impact fee monies.
As we collect impact fees, aren't we supposed to proportion that out in accordance with the projects that we have?
That's a decision for City Council. Uh, there are escrow funds for roads. There are escrow funds for parks, recreation, uh, for police, for fire. As far as allocating a certain percentage of every dollar for each one of the projects, I don't find that anywhere in the state law. Uh, that would be a decision for City Council, uh, to.
They used to do that, didn't they? A few years back?
Some, some did, some governments do, some don't. Some governments, uh, will prioritize the projects within their CIE and when they have, uh, that, uh, impact fee money, they, uh, take on that one project and complete it. But the city has been, uh, portioning out and appropriating, splitting it up amongst projects over the last few years. There was an agreement with Northside Cherokee Boulevard, uh, that does, uh, that percentage calculation on an annual basis.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Next item, item H, uh, discussion of waste removal RFPs, Chris Cummins.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask Mr. Ingram to come forward, he has the results of the RFPs that we sent out for our waste removal services. I've also passed out an update I had emailed earlier, um, showing the cost to the city and the comparison of three vendors. I had it on the update tonight, uh, for the mayor's request, the current cost.
Mayor Council, thank you. In July of this year, the City of Canton Sound requested proposals to provide sanitation services. Management then hosted a pre-bid meeting in which nine vendors participated. On August nineteenth, the city received proposals from three vendors, American Disposal, Advanced Disposal, and Waste Management. The city requested proposals be submitted for two options. Option one, the city will continue to administer the billing and collections as it does currently. And option two, the sanitation vendor would assume the billing and collection responsibility. You have received a summary of the cost proposals submitted, as Mr. Cummins just mentioned. American Disposal not only failed to submit a complete proposal, but the cost proposal was approximately ten to twenty percent higher than the other two vendors. Therefore, this vendor was not given any further consideration. Of the remaining two, Waste Management provided the most competitive proposal, being approximately thirty percent lower on standard residential curbside services. Because Waste Management is the current service provider, transition, transition issues would be minimal. Beyond choosing the specific vendor, it is necessary for council to consider the two options that were, that proposals were provided for. Option one was for the city to continue the relationship status quo. This method requires significant administrative support by the city. Option two would lower the average residential charge to approximately fourteen dollars per month, saving the average customer thirty dollars per year. This would be accomplished through the levy of a flat franchise fee versus the charging of service fees necessary to cover expenses associated with administering the billing and house currently. Administering the sanitation services, which includes setting up and closing accounts, answering and responding to customer phone calls, and field trips to replace or provide refuse containers, requires significant resources. Option two would save staff time, allowing an improvement in overall customer service within other functions. City management recommends that the City of Canton enter into a franchise agreement with Waste Management to provide sanitation services and administer those services as proposed in option number two. In doing so, the city would impose a ten percent franchise fee for gross collections from commercial customers as well as a flat two-dollar fee per month, per customer for residential customers. These fees will be used to offset wear and tear on city roads, cover the expenses associated with code enforcement as it relates to sanitation services, and help account for any expenses for the roll-off site above and beyond revenues generated on site. I'll be requesting action on September eighteenth meeting and would appreciate any ideas, suggestions, questions, and or comments the council has. Thank you.
How, how long contract is this?
This is for one-year renewable up to three.
For three years. What, what does that mean? One-year renewable up to three. Is that our choice or their choice or either choice?
I would assume it's either choice.
So it's a four-year deal?
No, it's a three-year.
So we're the three-year. Is that what we requested is what Waste Management requested?
Oh, yeah, currently. And at the end of the year, because we're not allowed to carry those contracts year to year, we could directly cancel those contracts at the end of one year. Or two years. I think we'll have to bid like we did on the current contract in three years.
Ken, do you have something, Mr. Gray?
Nathan, you mentioned, uh, option two with Waste Management doing direct bill would save, uh, two dollars per month for residential?
Yes, sir.
Um, are there any savings to the commercial customers?
The commercial quotes that came back were buried within cents, within pennies of what, uh, concordia radius.
And does the contract require Waste Management providing both commercial and residential?
In its current form, yes, yes, sir, it does. And that would be commercial just inside the downtown historic district.
Do you, uh, I'm sorry, Jack, go ahead.
You said just inside downtown?
Yes, sir.
Who provides it down?
Right, uh, Waste Management does.
So they wouldn't be doing that?
No, sir. They, they would, they would continue doing that. Under option two on the current proposal, we're proposing entering into agreement for Waste Management to service the residential customers and the commercial customers within, within the downtown historic district. That's what they currently do.
Mr. Cummins?
If, I might clarify for Mr. Goodman, that the commercial customers outside of the downtown is, we only have, we've set it up so that we only have one commercial collector in the downtown area. In the exterior areas, and currently if I'm wrong, Mr. Ingram, exterior areas outside of the downtown, it is an arrangement between the commercial enterprise and the waste collector. So there could be multiple firms that collect outside of downtown and we don't get involved other than we do see, receive a franchise fee. Isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think, let me answer your question first, please.
In this, uh, where, where it shows the, um, uh, charge to us is ten seventy-eight for residential curbside under option two and, and sixty-two cents for the recycle bank additional charge. So, and they're charging the sixty-two cents to, to every household, is that right? Every account, maybe?
If, if the council so choose to keep the recycle bank, that would be a charge for sixty-two cent per household being serviced, regardless of whether that household used the recycle bank or not.
Can, can you tell me how many people, how many households utilize the recycle bank now?
May I ask Mr. Knight?
Sure.
Mr. Knight, with Waste Management here. Mr. Knight, do you know the answer to that?
It's a little over five hundred.
Thank you, sir.
Five hundred?
Like five thirty or something like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, under the recycle, um, this morning at the chamber, they passed out awards for recycling. And this night, you might want to help me on that. The City of Woodstock, their, their number of residents that collect recycle, isn't it way, ways past our number?
It's, it's a little above, uh, they have a few more people than, you know, you guys do as far as households. Uh, one thing that they do, their weight per home is higher, which I think, Mr. Ingram, I talked about it. I think the sixty-five gallon, which is what they have, would probably help you increase the service on that. As far as the amount, yes.
Or do they drink more beer?
I won't touch that one.
Man, they, they, they outperformed us on that recycle.
I won't come in on that one. So what, what you're saying is five hundred out of, how many accounts total?
Sixty-three hundred accounts.
Is that residential and commercial?
No, sir, that's just residential.
Do, uh, okay, so, uh, commercial doesn't qualify a hundred. Well, they get, they'd get charged for it, though, right, right, on recycling?
No, I, I don't look at commercials.
They don't get charged as a recycle, okay. So out of five hundred out of sixty-three hundred?
I believe ten percent.
Ten percent. Question is, sixty-two cents on the household, is that worth continuing? Just a question. I mean, how many people, how many, how many, how many people, uh, are recycling? How many of the sixty-three accounts, how many are recycling?
We are.
Yeah, we are.
You're recycling, but not necessarily on the recycle, uh, bank, right?
Yes, yes.
So we must have all five hundred in here tonight.
It can be promoted, yes.
Go ahead.
I think, I think what Mr. Cummins said is right. You know, I, I pushed for that when we got this contract last time. I wasn't going to sign it until we actually got that. And I think it's been a very good thing, but I think we have not promoted it as well as we should have. I know a lot of people in our audience and a lot of people that I know are recycling and enjoy doing that. And I think like they saw at the, at the chamber this morning, they promoted. I think if we promoted a little more, we could get a lot more out of it.
I've been recycling a long time, but I'm not, I'm not on the bank.
You ship it.
Yeah, but you should be.
And I, I might add, we've made, the city's made a, a good strides this year toward, uh, you know, putting the word out to recycle bank, you know, in cooperation with Waste Management, so.
Well, I'll set out a goal, see how much we can increase that between now, this year and next year. But we need to really, we'll have to be promoting.
I think a lot of us just have us join the bank. I mean, we're, we're doing, we're doing, we just have to join the bank, so we need to be doing.
Okay, um. The current rates. Ten seventy-eight plus sixty-two, would that be what they are charging us per household? Which is eleven forty. Now, they're charging ten fifty. And they would be doing the, the, all the billing, all the collection. And, uh, my, my question would be, do we need to charge roughly a hundred thousand dollars in a franchise fee? Or do we need to lower that down substantially and, and lower what we charge our residents a little bit? I'm not sure what, I, I'm not sure how you justify the hundred thousand dollars as far, if they're going to do the billing, they're going to do the collecting, they're going to do, hopefully, most of the complaint getting, if there's some of that, you know, and there will be. I'm not sure exactly what we do for that.
Well, like I commented in, uh, uh, my speech, the, the franchise fee by definition is, was set up and, and defined as use of easements, you know, the traveling down the roads. Obviously, there, there is some wear and tear on the roads. Uh, there will be code enforcement issues that have to be dealt with on the city's part. Uh, quantify that, how much the franchise fee should be, uh, a good discussion. But, but there are obviously are expenses that the city will still have to incur, uh, with sanitation service.
What's the difference? What is the difference, uh, between the franchise in this case and just a contract with them to perform that service?
Boiled down, probably not any real difference. It's just the ability to charge that fee.
So is there some limit to what we could charge them, right?
I don't think it's regulated.
Maybe we'll charge more. I don't think, I don't think big like that.
Listen, rare.
It's a pass on, it's a pass through costs.
I was about to say, it's not really a charge. Waste Management would pass through to the citizens, to the customer.
But, but that hundred thousand is a charge to our water customers. It is a charge to them. And if any amount, we can lower that, their bill should go down a little bit. I would think. I'm just kind of.
Mr. Mayor, I think the key word you used was mostly. I would hope all. And maybe some of this cost will cover that mostly. There's a lot of, uh, I guess, reports now of failure to pick up complete garbage and things like that that we handle and hopefully we don't have to do that anymore.
I'm sure we'll still get a few for, for a long time, should we go, assuming we go this route. Anyone else have any comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item, discussion of wage fees for Phil's Faith Event. Uh, Mr. Goodman?
Yes, um, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes puts this event on every year, has for the last four years of, that I, that I know of. And it's, it's a great event. It's held over at the high school by the students. We have a great attendance. Big community event. And, uh, in the past, we've waived the signed fees that they're asking for. I think they have five banners and, uh, some yard signs. So they're asking us to consider waiving that fee. I think it's a great thing to do. It helps the community. It's, it's a lot of involvement for the city. And we get a lot of people that eat out and do everything else afterwards, so.
Okay, anyone else? All right. The, uh, next item, discussion of waiver and annexation fee for Lane Wood five eleven Oakdale Road. This, this is property along, which you have a tax plaque there, I believe, that shows the, uh, property which does join the city. And this property owner, uh, is desirous of coming into the city. And although she's really not desirous or wanting at least to, to pay the cost of annexation. The question is whether it is our, to our benefit, I guess, to go ahead and, and allow that annexation and waive those fees and bring that property into the city. About fifteen hundred, I believe, isn't it?
Mr. Mayor, it's fif- it's fifteen hundred total, of which about four hundred is actual cost to the city for advertising. Other than that, the, the normal way, I think the thousand dollars was just the fee and a hundred dollars was considered our administrative cost. And then approximately four hundred dollars for advertising. We have to advertise annexation within the Tribune.
Not, not any law.
We don't? Uh, it was under the impression we did.
It's usually part of, it's usually part of the zoning.
Yeah.
It's usually part of the rezone.
Well, when you bring this in, you have to bring it in at some zone, would you?
Uh, if you have to rezone it. But we'll have to look at that because you could, if there's an equivalent zoning, you wouldn't necessarily have to rezone it. But yeah, if we have to rezone it, then you'd be advertising.
But anyway, that's the way the normal fee is done, whether this particular property had to be advertised. had to be advertised, I'm not sure. I was under the impression it did.
You're right. If we had to do a rezoning process, we would be advertising.
So basically, what Mr. Goodman's saying is, really what it would be costing us is $400, pretty much, right?
That's correct.
At maximum, if we don't have to advertise, none of the costs is anything.
So anyway, take a look at this. Anybody have any questions, comments in there? If not, take a look at this, and then we will...
Is there a residence there?
Yeah, actually, there is. Actually, what, the driveway goes right this way out to the city. It's not really shown, but it shares a driveway all the way out to Oakdale Road, even though it joins that, what's the name of that? It's not Haynes Road, is it? Is this Haynes here?
I believe it is.
Okay. Yeah, okay, Haynes Road. Even though it looks like it may join there, that's not the access. The access is off Oakdale Road, 511 Oakdale Road. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. City manager, you have anything else?
Yes, I do. We have a trails grant from Heritage to Bowling Park, an amount of $100,000. I'm going to ask council to allow me to decline and reapply for that grant. And the reason for declining and reapplying are the reasons, are the timeframe for completion, the amount of money that we have to come up to match if we're taking it out of lost funds. I've got a cash flow analysis that during the timeframe with the commitments we've already made with lost expenditures in our current budget, we won't have the money available. There's a problem with the current design that's been done. The concrete way or pavement that is to be built is underneath power lines where Georgia Power trucks would be driving in I don't know how long, four inches of concrete will last with trucks possibly driving on top of it. Even if we allow for the redesign, leaving access open to, in those areas, we still have to go through the designing process. The, if we move it in, or move the concrete way out of the, underneath the power lines, we will have to get other easements. I don't think we have easements in all cases that we cover the movement of the trails. So the, you know, all in all, it's the recommendation of city management that we decline the $100,000 and reapply for a later date in order to complete those trails.
Got it. Well, I hate to see us have to walk away from a $100,000 grant. But I understand that completion by the end of year 15 would be next to impossible. But a couple of questions as far as the future with that trail. Obviously, that's, if you've seen the trails in other parts of the county and how much it's, it means to the area that they have those trails, that we need to go ahead and get this trail done. I got a couple of questions about the amount that the trails is going to cost. One, I don't think the organization that designed it, it was the same organization designed our park, our new park. And if you were to ask the gentleman in charge of it from the county, he doesn't want to do business there again. And I have to, would agree with him based on some of the things that I've experienced out there the last four, five months. So, one, I'm not real keen on the organization that we used to design it. Two, is that I'm still not convinced that we have to have concrete. There's so many, excuse me, there's so many trails around that are not concrete. If you go down to Woodstock, they got trails that are not concrete.
Are they floodway?
I couldn't answer that for sure. There probably some that are, but I can't answer that for sure. But why do we have to have concrete?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that we have to have concrete. The problem with the agreement and the way the grant is set up, whether we have concrete or don't have concrete, the minimum local match that we have to come up with is $600 to $9,000, according to this grant. Whether it's concrete, whether it's mulch, or whatever it is, that's the way the grant has been set up. So the cost to the city is $600 to $9,000 on top of that $100,000. And that's it. And within the timeframe, it's the cash flow. I mean, if we were dealing two to, two and a half years out now, and I look at this lost cash flow, which I'll be glad to share with anybody, it's quite detailed, you know, you could probably do it at that later time.
I understand the cash flow issue, but I had some questions, how that could be handled as well, but I won't go into that at this point. But I still don't understand why we have to have $600 and some odd thousand dollars.
Maybe we look at reapplying and doing it a different way without that and see what type of grant we get, the way it's set up now.
Great suggestion, because there are trails all over this country that are not concrete. And it's...
I believe $600,000, that's a maximum, isn't it, on this top grant?
Yes, sir.
So that's the most anybody can get, $100,000. So whatever we applied against, whether it's, if we have a $300,000 project or something, you know, if $100,000 is all we're going to get. And the thing about it is, they may not give us $100,000 unless it is to that level of a project of $500, $600, $100,000. Is there any, is there any thoughts of any reprioritization or anything of projects that we've got that we could look at? But I think, I think that trail from Heritage over to Bowling is very, very important. And I think it needs to, I think we need to get that ready to go. Jack?
Yeah, I would, I would say I agree. We've worked on this for quite a few years. I was with Mr. Owen this weekend, and he was down pulling some of the trails. And of course, we worked on getting the easements with the attorneys and things of that nature. It's already had a lot of legwork. I actually was with someone today who has brought some new information about maybe being able to help us along, getting some new property there, and also easing our parking problem. Maybe, one of the suggestions Mr. Owen had was that we would be able to eventually maybe even go underneath the bridge and use that portion rather than crossing Highway 5, which is very dangerous. We've got a parking problem having events right now with Service League and River Fest. That's, it came about, I think, because of our waste project. And it's going to be that, plus the highest level we can reach up there new stuff. So we can talk about all this, but it's, I think, we need to look at doing this project because, as you know, the whole is no, it will bring a lot of people into our area. A lot of people already want to use this part. A trail all the way from Etowah all the way there to Bowling. I think that, that would be a great thing if we can redo it and maybe we can give you a new look at it here from Mr. Collins.
Anyone else?
Just one last point is, you know, I have no objections to the project, is I just don't have any money.
Well, I understand that. And for $600,000 plus, I agree with Mr. Collins. I just don't see why we have to, and I know that's the way it's been designed up until now. And I'm just not convinced everything has to be concrete, but...
At some point, you gotta, you gotta make a decision because we've got to accept or decline it.
I understand. If we, if we were to redesign this project and it came in less money, would, would we not, do we really have to spend $600 and something thousand to get to 100? Or is it likely that they would give us amendment to that if we redesigned instead of 10 foot wide and made it eight foot wide?
The way that the current contract the DNR has prepared is based upon the current design and application and cost estimates. There is a deadline for expenditure of these dollars. And if we do a redesign amendment, not only will it have to have Georgia Department of Natural Resources approval, it will also have to have U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service approval. We did previously approach DNR in regards to shifting this grant money to the portion of the trail from the bridge bulkhead towards Heritage Park. And we're basically told that we should forget that because the application of grant was too far down the line.
So what is the deadline for utilization?
December 31st, 2015.
So we have time then to give us some...
The clock on this started ticking July 2013.
What's that?
The time clock for this grant started ticking in July 2013.
Mr. Mayor, one last point. It's great to get $100,000, but if the trails designed, as Mr. Hubbard may say, is a necessity, only costs the city $300,000 instead of $609, I guess I don't need the $100,000. Or I wouldn't think we'd want to spend on $600,000 to get another $100,000 if we can get the job done for $300,000. So our recommendation would be to relook the design and decline the current grant and then reapply for a grant.
Anyone else? Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a second.